Good evening. I'll call to the Arvada City Council Meeting for December 19th, 2022. Call upon Mayor Protem David Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you'll join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
I move to excuse Councilmember Pfeiffer from tonight's business meeting.
Motion to excuse. Mr. Mormon, do you have something else, sir?
No, I was going to make the motion.
I had three of you jump in. Either everybody wants to see Mr. Pfeiffer gone, or just more than happy to be the one to have him excused. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer is formally excused from tonight's meeting. We will move on to public comment. And Mindy Moore, you're the individual who has signed up for public comment tonight. Good evening.
I already emailed comments to the university. He looked really short. I know there are more important things going on here with our new police chief being sworn in, but it did have to do with homelessness. And I know you're having a study session January 9th, and this is really the only opportunity for public comment before then, so that's why I came in. I just wanted to offer a few. Do you get to reset my time? I'll keep it short. That's okay.
You're on.
No worries. But this has to do, these thoughts come from the years I volunteered with family promise, with the severe weather shelter, and at the front desk of Mission There are a lot of challenges with housing homeless people, and I know our Housing Authority and other agencies have been putting a lot of people in housing with vouchers, but there's a lot of issues with people who've been chronically homeless and them staying stably housed. It can be challenging for them, and the follow-up visits and making sure that they have the services they need is something that stretches everyone thin. And I know our city team really doesn't have the staffing or bandwidth to do that either. So there are a lot of grants that are available now through the state from ARPA funds and others where cities can apply to get money for some of those services. And I hope the city will consider investing in those housing stabilization services. I also know that you're looking at a navigation center on Marshall Street, which I think is great, but it'll be several years before that can be built. In the meantime, I hope that the city will work with our neighboring cities and Jefferson County to look at interim steps for getting people off the street and into housing, some types of temporary shelter, whether it's on the land the city's buying or unused lands throughout the county. There's the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. Most of that's been closed for several years now. They have an RV camping area, for example, that could be used. It has utilities available there. So I think working with our other cities and Jeffco to look for some temporary 24/7 shelter in the meantime is really, really important, and I urge you to do that. And with that, I'll just stop, and thank you very much for everything that you do for our city.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Does anybody else wish to address City Council during public comment? And Kristin Rush, do we have anybody via Zoom?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I just wanted to make certain that we've approved the minutes for our last meeting.
I did, didn't I? You know, I've been out of practice. I haven't been up here for a few weeks. Do we have any changes, corrections to the minutes of December 5th, 2022? Seeing none, they are approved as presented. Thank you, Ms. Morris, for that. I was just so excited about the next item on the agenda that I wanted to rush to that, and I think the fact that we've got so many people in the audience is a real testament to what we're here doing tonight. We're here for the swearing in of Ed Brady as the next police chief for the city of Arvada. Luanne and I have a tradition of watching certain movies. Yesterday, we watched White Christmas and A Sound of Music. And one of the lines from Sound of Music is that when God closes one door, he opens a window. And that's what we've seen happen here in the city of Arvada. We had an excellent police chief in Link Straight who led us through some horribly difficult times and also through some great times during his time as police chief. And he is moving into a very well-deserved retirement, and we'll be honoring him tomorrow at a retirement ceremony. But that opened up the position for police chief for the city of Arvada. And we knew we had the right internal candidate for that. This is a city manager selection. The city council is not directly engaged in the selection of the police chief, but we were all thrilled with her decision to elevate Ed Brady to that position. So with that, if I can call Mr. Brady to the microphone, I'll join you, and we'll swear in.
You're on this side, so everybody can see your handsome face. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Ed Brady.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Arvada.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Arvada.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police chief.
Of the office of police chief.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Would you like to address the council in your place?
Councilmembers and Ms. Gillis, thank you so much for this opportunity to be the next chief of police here in Arvada. Your belief in me has been very, very humbling. Just as humbling has been the belief of other members of the city, the police department, other supporters that I know, and my family. It is remarkable. Thank you all for showing up this evening. I'm honored to fall in the line of many other great police chiefs here in Arvada, and many of them are with us here tonight. Chief Jerry Williams, Chief Ron Sloan, Chief Don Wick, Chief Link Straight. Chief Alstrom was unable to make it tonight, but he called and let me know his well wishes. So I am honored to follow in their tradition as well. I'd like to congratulate Chief Link Straight on a wonderful career. Thirty-five years here with the Arvada Police Department. He led us through four of the most difficult years that this agency has ever faced, and I'm looking forward to celebrating that wonderful career with him tomorrow, and I hope you all can attend as well. I'm honored to work with so many brave and dedicated professionals here in the city of Arvada. Our officers go out every day to protect this community. They go out into unknown situations and put their lives at risk to save others. There was an example of this last week where our officers evacuated many in the apartment that caught fire. And we also have a very dedicated support staff within the police department who are just as dedicated to providing safety for this city and aiding those officers to go out and do their work every day. But most of all, I would say that I'm just grateful. I'm grateful to be part of this wonderful community, grateful to be part of this wonderful leadership team in the city, and grateful to be amongst the ranks of the fine men and women in blue. Thank you all very much.
Ed, we're honored to have you, and we know that you'll carry on the great tradition of our police department, and we look forward to your many more years of faithful service to this community.
With that, as I understand, there's a little get-together that's going to be going on. Ms. Gillis, do you want to tell folks?
There is right now, and I might suggest that you all go there. That it is in the atrium. You are certainly welcome to stay for the council meeting, but because of the overlap, we are all set up right now for the atrium, and we'll likely be joining you here shortly once we get through the meeting. But we're all good to go.
Okay, we'll try to be efficient with the running of our meeting so we can join in the festivities. With that, we have several items on our consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing a grant between the city of Arvada and the U.S. Department of Justice COPS Office, COPS Hiring Program, CHP, to provide grant funding to the city in the amount of $250,000 for the Arvada Police Department. Second is a resolution authorizing a grant between the city of Arvada and the U.S. Department of Justice Assistance Grant Program to provide grant funding to the city in the amount of $25,152. Third is a resolution accepting an annexation petition concerning Sabell Filing Number Three located west of Urban Street and south of West 58th Avenue, finding said petition substantially compliant with CRS 31121071, and setting a public hearing for February 6th, 2023, 6:15 p.m., for the city council to determine whether the area meets the requirements of CRS 3112104 and 105, and is considered eligible for annexation. Next is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement between Arvada and the city of Arvada Chamber of Commerce for the property located at 7305 Grandview Avenue, also known as the Arvada Visitor Center. Final consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing the Arvada Police Department's participation in the United States Department of Defense Law Enforcement Support Office, LESO, program. Ms. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items R-22-109, R-22-110, R-22-111, R-22-112, and R-22-116 all be approved.
Motion for approval. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an approved absence. Thank you. Next, we have two resolutions. First is R-22113, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the Agreement Regarding Design and Construction of Drainage and Flood Control Improvements for Little Dry Creek, AGCO Tributary C at Lake Arbor, City of Arvada. Ms. Gillis.
Yes, Council Mayor, this is for city plan improvements to Lake Arbor Lake to stabilize banks and cleaning out of the Ford Bay. This is funded through the Stormwater Utility Dedicated to Lake Arbor Dredging, often referred to as the Bank Stabilization Project. The financial impact is $2.4 million. The city team recommends approval.
Open it up for city council. Questions or actions? Ms. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R-22113, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the Agreement Regarding Design and Construction of Drainage and Flood Control Improvements for Little Dry Creek, ADCO Tributary C at Lake Arbor, City of Arvada, be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an approved absence. Thank you. Second resolution tonight is Resolution R-22114, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a memorandum of understanding between Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Jefferson County, and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Westminster to provide funding to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health for the continuation of crisis intoxication and withdrawal management services to the community. Ms. Gillis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Arvada's contribution, in accordance with the memorandum of understanding, is $110,828 for 2023, which will be funded from the general fund and the city's tax increment funds. As a reminder, these services were previously provided by Arapahoe House prior to 2018, when the original MOU was established. The services of withdrawal management and crisis services can be invaluable to all agencies and community members within Jefferson County, and each agency or program has an interest in maintaining these services and funding for these branches of the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Commander Melanie Thornton is here. Should you have any questions?
Good. Ms. Smith, you're first.
I'd just like to make the motion if...
Okay, Ms. Simpson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I will fight Ms. Smith for the motion.
Good. We're not going to have any arm wrestling. Ms. Smith?
All right. I move R-22114, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a memorandum of understanding between the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Jefferson County, and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, Westminster, to provide funding to the Jefferson Center for Mental Health for the continuation of crisis intoxication withdrawal management services to the community.
Motion for approval. Ms. Smith, do you want to vote on your motion? All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to public hearing. We are at an appropriate time. I'll open the public hearing on Council on R-22115, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Service Plan for GEO's Neighborhood Metropolitan District. Ms. Gillis.
I will hand to Community Economic Development Director Ryan Stachelsky.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The GEO's Neighborhood Metropolitan District is requesting an amendment to their service plan. The requested amendment is to increase their debt limit by $500,000 to a total of $5.5 million. The purpose of this increase is to negotiate the most cost-effective pricing for television relay and translation services for district residents. The request is supported by the GEO's Homeowner Advisory Committee and the GEO's District Board, which has two homeowners on it. According to the GEO's Homeowners Advisory Committee, this investment will lead to an overall cost reduction to the GEO's residents of $156,000 over 10 years. To put it plainly, when the development was first put in, there was infrastructure put in that was sole sourced to a specific internet provider. That internet provider has since sold out to a different company, and the residents of GEOs have found it not being the most effective internet service. They have been working as a residential community to find out an alternative, and so they have decided that there are other options for them. However, for those other options to be cost-effective, they have to enter into a long-term contract. And from the eyes of a metro district, a long-term contract is akin to issuing debt. They're not actually going to be issuing debt the same way you would issue bonds and pay for public infrastructure, but rather the view of a long-term contract is what the debt is in this case. So this allows them to issue into, enter into that longer-term contract at their choosing when they negotiate with an internet provider. This gives them the flexibility and the option to choose that provider, and we are processing it at their request. Kim Crawford is here with outside counsel, who has also helped us review their application, and everything looks in order.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to testify for or against this matter? I do have three people who have indicated their support. M. Michael Cohen, Eric Mathis, and Karen Gerbats have all indicated that they support this action. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak, I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for city council questions or actions. Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion if there are no questions.
I see no other questions. You may proceed.
All right. I move that R-22115, a resolution approving the First Amendment to Service Plan for GEO's Neighborhood Metropolitan District, be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. With that, we will move on to Council Bill 22108, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 40.5 no trespass orders for city-owned property of Article II miscellaneous offenses of Chapter 62 offenses of the Arvada City Code. Ms. Gillis.
Actually, Your Honor, it'll be me on this one.
Okay.
This ordinance amends certain procedural aspects related to entry of no trespass orders for city-owned property. Specifically, once a no trespass order is served upon a defendant, it requires the Arvada Municipal Court to convene a status hearing on the matter. If a defendant appears for that status hearing and wishes to contest the order, the municipal court will set the matter for a contested hearing, where the court will hear from both the city and the defendant in determining whether the no trespass order should be lifted, be modified in any aspect or manner, or remain in effect. If the defendant fails to appear for either the status hearing or a requested contested hearing, the court will enter the no trespass order, which will remain in effect for one year from the date of service. Convening an initial status hearing rather than automatically setting the matter for a contested hearing, which is what we currently do, increases efficiencies within the Arvada Municipal Court, the city attorney's office, and the police department, while still ensuring that a defendant has an opportunity to be heard. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve CB 22108, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 40.5 no trespass orders for city-owned property.
Very good. Is there any individual in the audience that would like to testify for or against on this matter? And we have no one signed up remotely. I'll close the public comment portion. Open it up for city council questions or actions. Mr. Mormon.
Thank you. I do have a question, just to clarify. So how does the due process change, or how does that look from a defendant coming into court?
So the defendant will still receive the same due process. Our exact timeline of when that occurs changes just slightly here. So a defendant will have the opportunity to come in for the initial status hearing, and at that point, the defendant can specifically request a contested hearing, where he or she can bring in witnesses and evidence and present that evidence to the court for the court's determination as to whether or not the no trespass order has been or will be lifted or imposed. So the due process does remain the same, but the defendant gets that additional chance to understand what's coming and what that contested hearing might look like in front of the municipal court prior to it happening.
Thank you. And I understand, is this correct, that we're really getting this more in line with how we handle other types of cases? Is that correct?
That's correct. It is uncommon for us to move to a contested, more adversarial proceeding in a first appearance, and this would move our no trespass order process to comport with those other processes that we currently have.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll open it up for Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 21-108, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 40.5 no trespass orders for city-owned property of Article II miscellaneous offenses of Chapter 62 offenses of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading numbered 4833, an order published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. That completes our public hearings for tonight. We do have one individual that signed up for public comment, Mr. John Rogers.
Do you all remember me?
You were here a couple of weeks ago.
One of you. So, should I start?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is John Rogers. Most of you may recognize me from two weeks ago. So just to restate the facts real quick. I live near Long Lake Park. It's a Jeffco Open Space Park. It includes a reservoir called Vern Lake. It's adjacent to the Fairmount Canal and the Ralston Creek Trail. The city's streets department has deposited street sweepings here several years back and again in this fall, about eight weeks ago. The street sweepings are grossly contaminated with garbage and litter. It's created a horrendous, dangerous condition on the ground in this public park, and the debris blows into Vern Lake. So every day, it gets worse. So a little sense of scale, right, the scale of this thing. So just so you know, right, none of you know me. I'm a registered Colorado professional engineer. My expertise is environmental engineering. So I know what I'm talking about. I'm not making this up. And the other thing is, you just need to have any reasonable person go there. Go there tomorrow and report the facts literally on the ground. Excuse me. So it's about two football fields, a little over two and a half acres. It's about a foot deep. And you can get all this in about maybe the size of that table. So it's a really severe, massive problem, and it gets worse. And the thing is, so timeline. The first dumping was like before 2020. I had some communication with the city then, and the dumping stopped. The whole neighborhood, like all summer long, we picked up all the trash that had blown into the lake. Kids fish in the lake and stuff, and it was just covered with this. So we did that already once. And then I communicated with the city. The dumping kind of stopped, and then it went again about eight, 10 weeks ago. I communicated with the director of Public Works and other people at the city in mid-November. The claim was, there was a recognition that this happens, that y'all dumped this out there, and the claim was, or the understanding was, that the debris was removed. That's a quote. We removed, and it's just not a fact. I mean, it's not complicated. It's just not accurate. So I sent some pictures. I communicated like this, and then nothing. About mid-November, nothing more at all. And then I was here two weeks ago, and nobody has communicated with me. So, so, these are the facts. And the thing is, you can't, like, time matters. You can't just, oh, we'll get to it next summer or something. You dumped, the city dumped garbage in our park. It's dangerous, and it gets worse every day because it's blowing into the lake just like before. It did it all day today. So you got to get on this. It can't happen like later. And there's been no communication with me at all, unless I just said, I guess you get the idea. I mean, it can't be legal. I can't imagine this is legal. It's certainly not right. I mean, it's totally indefensible, and it's a fact. And the city's not doing anything about it. I've been at this eight weeks now, about seven, eight weeks. It was the end of October. It was the first time I said hello. So the needs, as I communicated before, and I wrote this in some emails, this obviously never, this must stop and never, ever happen again definitively, because based on the communication I got, more garbage could arrive tomorrow. I mean, that's basically what I was told. Yeah, we do this. So it can't happen anymore. And then y'all got to get this out of there. You got to come with the crews, the same crew that spread it all around, and get it out of there. And then, and then police the area and keep it clean, yada yada. I mean, you get it. So, and I even suggested a place to put it. There's a really nearby spot, which would be appropriate. I think it's a city that uses it for staging of stuff. Put a little fence, and there you go. You have this right next to the lake. I mean, come on. So my question is, what now? We have a minute. Do we, can you tell me? Not exactly what will happen, but who's going to do something and when, and what can I expect?
Our process for public comment is that individuals are encouraged, come before us, make their comments. We don't get into a dialogue with you at this time because we want to look into it, see what's going on. I can assure you, somebody from the city team will be in contact.
I can assure you, somebody from the city team will be in contact. First of all, they got to get back to the city, to us, as the city council is to, you know, what happened, what's going on, what's their side of this issue. We've heard yours.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you for that response. And so I would just say again, I'm sure there's some internal process. How did this happen? What happened, whatever? First, you got to get the garbage out of your neighbor's yard now. Somebody has to do that first. It would be my respectful request, and not get hung up on how it happened or anything else. But it gets worse every single day, literally, every time the wind blows. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else wish to address City Council during public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Reports from City Council. Anybody have anything? Ms. Simpson?
All right. Well, perfect for the night we swore in Chief Brady. We have Chow for Champions happening on Christmas Day. That's less than a week away now. 11 a.m., Hilton Garden Inn. We still need a couple more delivery drivers. If anyone is interested in joining us for this awesome program, tell your neighbors, tell your friends. It's awesome to bring kids to, especially. The fire guys love showing off their trucks. And so, yeah, I just encourage anyone who's watching to reach out to me via email or phone. We'd be delighted to have you join us.
Very good. This is our last city council meeting before the end of the year on behalf of the entire city council. I want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, whatever other forms of celebration you celebrate, and also to acknowledge the year-end and wish everyone a very, very Happy New Year. Ms. Gillis?
Wish the same for everybody in council as well. Just a reminder, January 9th will be our next meeting, and we will have a study session on, I should have a workshop, I'm sorry, on homelessness. So that will be posted.
Very good. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned.